Commissioner Goss is excused. Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner Kress?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Will everybody stand for the pledge allegiance? And Mr. McCoy, would you mind leading us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. All right, approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes. Review and approval of regular meeting minutes of June 12th, 2019.
Move to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All righty. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Any comments from the public? All righty, I see none. All right, reports. Richard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. There are two cases that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission that went before the council at the last meeting on July 2nd. First case was the CUP 19003, that's a conditional use permit to allow auto sales in an I-1 district on Esco Street, and that was approved by the council with the conditions that were recommended by the Commission. And the abandonment case was also approved by the council. Parcel key was vacated and they accepted a public utility placement. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you, Richard. New business. Item A, rezoning case, RZ 19-0001. A request from Mike Fettrow, applicant and Pioneer Title Trust, 9030A, property owner, for a rezoning of certain property from C3 Commercial Service Business to R2 Residential Multiple Family Low Density to allow for two single-family residences to be built. The subject site consists of two 5,000 square foot parcels which are located adjacent to North Kenneth Road and North Adams Street north of Airway Avenue. The property is described as Kingman's Airport Track Block 3, Lot 7 and 17, Section 6, T-21N, R16W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This is a rezoning case, RZ 19001, and requests to rezon from C3 to R2 for a property located -- it's actually two parcels located on North Kenneth Road and North Adams Street north of Airway Avenue. This is the property in question. This is a view from North Adams Street looking toward Kenneth, which is the next street to the west. This is the surrounding zoning map showing the property currently, as I said, it's Zone C3. There is R2 zoning directly to the north of the site and C3 to the south. And then this is the subject site again in red, two parcels. The -- where you see UC and H on that, on the map, that's just indicating which lots are now developed. H indicates a occupied completed house. This area is a little bit old, so I wanted to show that to you so you can see what's happening in the area. The UC is under construction, the house is under construction on that lot, so you can see it's developing with single-family homes in this area currently. And the property consists of two 5,000 square foot parcels. It's on the boundary between community commercial and intermediate density residential areas within the 2030 general land use plan. The zoning development history was annexed -- the area was annexed in 1977. All lots within 300 feet of Airway Avenue were rezoned to C3 at that time, and lots north of that to Stevens were zoned R2. This is a pretty flat area. It's in flood zone X, which is between the limits of the base flood and the 500-year flood zone. There's an eight-inch water line and eight-inch sewer line in both the North Adams and North Kenneth that serve the site. Both streets are fully improved and have 50-foot wide rights-of-way adjacent to the site. Posted the site on June 21st, sent notices to the surrounding property owners, published notice in the Kingman Daily Minor. We did receive one letter or one email in favor from a neighboring property owner, and there were no objections or comments from any departments or agencies. So again, this zoning would facilitate the construction of two single-family residences on the 5,000 square foot parcels. Single-family homes are permitted in R2 but not in the C3 district. In accordance with Section 31.400 of the zoning ordinance, whenever a change in the zoning map is being considered, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall make findings on the following items. One is to find that there's a demonstrated need for these permitted in the proposed zoning district. The area is growing rapidly. There are a lot of new single-family homes in the area being constructed on the existing 5,000 square foot size lots. While new commercial development has been fairly absent for this particular area, so demand for the single-family development in the area can be demonstrated. The Kingman's Airport Track subdivision was originally planted in 1929 and the area was annexed in 1977, and the lots are primarily 5,000 square foot in size. So the zoning, R2 zoning mainly north of the site does allow for multiple family development. However, you need to have at least 6,000 square feet in order to put a duplex on the property. And most lots, as I said, are 5,000 square feet. So as a consequence, most of the development has been in the single-family type of development. Small lots also make it difficult to cite commercial uses on those 5,000 square foot lots at our zoning commercial. There's also a 10-foot setback requirement between the commercial property and the adjacent residential use, which further limits the commercial use of those 5,000 square foot lots. Single-family homes, on the other hand, are used as side-in on those lots. So it does appear that the use is going to be compatible with and suitable for single-family development. And again, the areas on the boundary between areas designated for community commercial and intermediate density residential, and the IDR designation does allow R2 zoning, which would allow the single-family home. So it does appear to comply with our zoning ordinance and our general plan. So staff's recommendation is for -- to recommend rezoning of the property from C3 to R2, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I just have a comment. I know Mike Fettrow personally. You know, I don't think it would be any kind of a gain or anything like that. I just want it for the record that I do know him.
Okay.
As do I.
On the map there, Richard, all the ones in red are all C3. Out of all those, I'm assuming the ones that have the blue lettering on them are commercial.
Well, everything in red is commercial. The blue lettering is just that some of the parcel numbers are showing up there on the map. Some parcels are small and at this scale, the parcels don't show up. This gives you a better idea as what's there right now. You can see there is commercial along Airway, but then there's a little bit of a gap between those developed parcels right on Airway and where the houses begin to bit to the north there. So this is going to become almost like a no man's land here.
Well, like all of us, I read all the information, the history and all that, and it's probably, I'm assuming, would be just on a case-by-case basis, but would it behoove the city to just convert the rest of the vacant lots over to a residential instead of -- since there seems to be no businesses willing to, I guess, encroach farther into the neighborhoods?
Well, I don't know that this area would never develop, but I think you'd have to have probably a combination, light-lot combination situation where you combine two or three lots together to have a site large enough to do commercial development. And some people who have C3 properties may still want to develop, but commercial, so I think handling it more on a case-by-case basis makes a little bit more sense, and we also have to always be careful about not taking away some value of the property. They -- some people may could see that their property is more valuable as commercial than as residential, so kind of just handling as we get requests.
I just have a statement that I think it's wonderful because we have -- I mean, we need R2, more R2, we need more rentals. It's just a big shortage right now. So I think this is a blessing, too. So that's -- I just want to say this is -- I think it's a great thing. Comment.
This makes sense to me. There's a house built next door to it anyway.
Yeah.
There is R2 next to it, too.
It's kind of a no-brainer. I mean, because everything, you know, to the other side, it's already residential, so...
So I'll make a motion that we would approve.
Not yet, not yet.
There is a public hearing, so...
I know.
Oh, wait.
Any further questions, Richard? Thank you, Richard. I'll open this up to the public, please. Any comments or anybody want to? All right, I see none. Public comment very closed. All right, back to discussion.
I think you ought to make a motion.
Oh yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezon from C3 to R2.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further?
I second it.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Approve.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote?
Vicki, you missed Vicki.
She did.
She probably thought you voted aye.
Aye.
Want to stand up?
I was asking why you asked me.
All right, we got that one taken care of. All right, item B, rezoning case, RZ 19-0002. A request from Gary and Charlotte Sherwood, applicants and property owners, for a rezoning from R2 Residential Multiple Family Low Density to RR Rural Residential to allow a manufactured home and garage to be placed on a property. The subject site is one acre and is located at 3958 North Rainbow Drive. The property is described as Shanger Lot State's 2nd Amendment, Block 10, Lot 30, Section 5, T-21N, R16W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona.
Good evening again. This is rezoning case RZ 19002, rezoning from R2 to RR Residential. The -- again, the property is located at 3958 North Rainbow Drive. This is the property question from North Rainbow Drive looking east, and then the picture to the bottom is looking south down Rainbow Drive. Currently, the property is zoned R2, as is mentioned. There is RMH zoning to the north and to the east. RR is zoned to the south and west, and there's one area of R2 along Gordon Drive where there are some duplexes currently located. This is the aerial view of the site. You can see it's almost entirely developed with manufactured home type development either on half-acre or one-acre lots. Property itself is one acre in size. It's on the boundary between areas designated for rural density residential, one unit or less per acre, and intermediate density residential, nine to 16 units per acre. This area was annexed into the city in 2000. The R2 zoning was established on this lot, as well as two others to the north, as this most closely matched the county zoning as required by state statute. The lot directly north of this location was subsequently rezoned to RMH 20 and split into two lots in 2003 to allow manufactured home development on that property, which was subsequently done. There's no record of development on the subject site, however. The area is generally flat with a slight slope from the southeast to the northwest. It's located in flood zone X, which is outside the flood's 500-year flood zone. The public utilities there serve the site include a six-inch water line and an eight-inch sewer line in Rainbow Drive. Rainbow Drive itself is a maintained graded street with a 40-foot wide right-of-way and no other street improvements at this time. We posted the site again. Public notice was minor. Property owners within 300 feet were notified of the rezoning request. We didn't receive any comments from the public, and there were no objections or comments received from any departments or agencies. Again, this would facilitate the construction of a manufactured home and garage at this location. Manufactured homes are permitted uses in the RR district but not in R2. In accordance with the Section 31.400 of the zoning ordinance, in considering any changes to the official zoning map, the commission is asked to make findings on the following items. One is the demonstrated need for uses permitted in the zoning district. This is mostly a rural or semi-rural area with one acre and half-acre lots. Does have city sewer and water. This area does a lot of manufactured homes, and that primarily was developed in the area. Does make it attractive for that type of development, and the combination of large lots that allow that type of development with a sewer is kind of rare at Kingman. Most lots are already developed, therefore, a need for additional manufactured home development can be demonstrated. The Shanger Lot State subdivision itself was planted originally in 19 -- early 1960s with one-acre lots and unimproved 40-foot wide streets. Prior to the city's annexation, Mojave County rezoned three lots for multiple family use, although only one lot was ever developed with those duplexes, which is a lot on Gordon Drive. And then, as I mentioned, the lot immediately to the south was rezoned in 2003 to allow manufactured homes. So the subject site itself is now an island of R2 zoning, which would allow 19 inches per acre, which is surrounded by essentially low-density development of 1-2 inches per acre. North Rainbow Drive has a substandard right-of-way width, it's only 40 feet wider. Normal standard is 50 to 54 feet, and it lacks street improvements, which -- so considering that, it's really more appropriate for low-density development rather than the higher-density multiple family. So the site does appear to be compatible with and suitable for RR zoning. In finally, in accordance with the general plan, again, it's on a boundary between areas designated for rural density and intermediate density residential, and the rural density designation does allow RR zoning. So staff's opinion is that the request would be in accordance with the general plan. So our recommendation is to approve the rezoning from R2 to RR, and we have to answer any questions.
Any questions, anybody? All right, I see no question, Richard. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I'll open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? Please step forward and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Wes Maroney. My question on this is I have no objection to the manufactured home, but on that area with the streets being dirt and everything, would these people in the future be requesting the city to pave, you know, the street and put added burden onto the city? Is that possible? Can they do that, or...?
That would be a question you would have to ask staff at another time.
But that's -- that's my only question is, you know, I don't -- I think it's a good idea, but would they come and say, hey, you know, my home's here, I now want to block out the street?
Fair enough.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Any further questions from the public? All right, I see none. Closed. All right, open it up for discussion.
I have a question. Is the property owner here? Are you associated with Denise Sherwood? Is there any relation? Okay, just checking. Okay.
Me.
I'll just make a comment. I was there today and I actually talked to the people that live directly across the street. They hadn't -- they didn't recall ever receiving city notice. They didn't recall that, but they certainly didn't mind having the property rezoned, and it seems to me like it fits perfectly.
I'll agree. I agree with that.
Give a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Prove.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item C, zoning ordinance text amendment Z019-0002. A city initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman to consider changing the front side setbacks to 10 feet in certain residential zoning districts. Sylvia?
Hey. Good evening. That was a little too cool there. Sorry about that. Good evening. Okay, so, yeah, this is the text amendment on actually corner front side setbacks. And just to reiterate, we're talking about the setbacks on these corner lots. The purpose of this text amendment is to review the front side setback requirements for residential zoning districts R16, R18, R110, R120, and R140 and possibly reduce them. The application of the front side setback applies to corner lots only. Section 3 of the residential single-family zoning district, the City of Kingman zoning ordinance has the following setback requirements. And so right here, this is the area that we're looking at with front side. In R16, we have a 10-foot requirement. In R18, we have a 15. R110, 15. R120, we have a 20-foot, and R140, we have a 30-foot, which is slightly larger than our typical sides. And then also, it's a little variation from our front. Okay, so situations related to front side setbacks, there have been several instances where a property owner of a corner lot wanted to build a structure closer than the required front side setback allowance and could not. Building permit plans have been submitted for a new structure with less than the required setback allowance. These plans had to be revised and resubmitted. The task can be more complicated when a septic tank is involved with the project. That has happened before. We've had structures that were under 200 square feet constructed within the front set side back in error, thinking that the front side is the same as the side. Another common situation is structures under 200 square feet have been constructed within the front side setback in error, thinking that their property line begins from the edge of the sidewalk, which isn't always the case. And then in those situations, obviously, when it's under 200 square foot, we're not seeing the permit. That's when that happens most. There have been structures constructed within the front side setback in error after building plans were approved with the correct front side setbacks shown, and so when they get to the site, sometimes there's an error there as well. Did a little research and discussion. Upon completing research and discussing with various cities and city staff members, there is a general consensus that the reduction of the front side setback requirement to 10 feet will not be a building or life safety issue. Corner lots typically sit adjacent to a street and not a neighboring property owner, which gives a larger separation between structures and the appearance of more distance between structures. Other jurisdictions require 10-foot front side setback in similar residential zoning districts, so I did check with like Mojave County, the Cabasoo Bullhead, and they did. The reduction of the setback will allow the property owner to have more buildable area. Staff will spend less time dealing with issues related to front side setback situations do not -- that do not always have simple solutions. Having front side setback requirements similar to other jurisdictions may cause less confusion for those who develop in various jurisdictions. That's several reasons why we're bringing this here tonight. Here's just a few aerials, just kind of showing some typical corner side lots. This is a R16 zone property, and so there would be a 10 front side requirement here. This is an R140, which would require a 30, but it would be reduced down to 10, and nothing would happen in between the sides of adjacent properties. And then here, again, it's just another diagram showing where the setback would be revised to all 10-foot if approved. So staff recommends amending this section to change the front side setback requirements to 10 feet, and this just shows that we would be changing the chart to show that it was all going to be 10 feet. I mean, another idea that wasn't put in here is that basically our ordinance is very outdated, and of course, we're working on that now, but that's possibly why we had such outdated setback requirements from back when we first established this. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer questions.
What about block walls?
The block wall? Where it would go? Okay, so we don't actually take in permits for block walls at this point, but it wouldn't change -- like if it was on the property line, that would remain the same.
Isn't there a setback for that now, where they have to be so many feet from the road?
Okay, so, yeah, like the -- if the block wall located within the front setback of the property, it would only be allowed to be up to three feet solid and then four foot if it was like a fence, and then from that point on, it could go up to six foot.
Okay.
That doesn't change that as...
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, though.
It's six feet from the lowest point of the property, correct?
Correct.
And that's in all lot sizes, correct?
All lot sizes.
Yes. As long as you don't impede the view in the front setback. Fence line is on the property line.
Yeah, we can go back to this if this helps a little bit. Like this is the front base of the property and say this is the front setback, then the block wall starts here. I mean, as far as having to be the six-foot height.
But moving it forward by 10 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, moving that, so that's -- let's say that one's a 15-foot setback right now, and you put it to a 10-foot setback, you see where that's going to move that block wall up to, and it's going to be an obstruction for the visibility of taking that corner in a vehicle?
The block wall would actually stay in the same place because we would treat this as the front, so your front would still go back to the same location as the front setback, and then this is treated as a side anyway. Is there a better way to clarify that, Rich? Because I know corner lots are fun.
Well, I mean, like Sylvia said, walls don't require permits, and walls don't always mark where the property line is, and they don't have to be set back except in the case of the front yard itself. It does -- the front side, we don't have a setback requirement for walls.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you change the setback of where that house sits to 10 feet, and they put that block wall in the same place, that is going to create a visual obstruction for vehicles that are going to turn that corner and turn right or turn left of being able to see vehicles in oncoming traffic. That's my concern. You see where I'm coming from?
The site triangle.
So what you're saying is if a structure was built, let's say 10 feet, because right now, in this case, I think the property line is where the fence is, so you'd have a structure about where my arrow is there.
Okay.
Potentially. Whoops, where'd it go? It could potentially be here instead of over here. So it would be closer to the street, but you're still far enough back from the corner. It wouldn't affect the corner cutback visibility area, which is like 25 feet, which is really this area here. This setback here for the fence is far enough back, and that won't change. It really shouldn't affect the corner visibility, I wouldn't imagine. And in the small lot areas, you already have that setback requirement 10 feet, and I don't know that there's any obstruction problems that we've ever encountered.
Typically, in residential areas like this, block walls are typically put on, probably in 90% of the cases, on the property line, so nothing there changes.
It's already like that right now. It's not going to change anything.
I think maybe where Lori is confused is there is a building being constructed, and there was confusion there on the setback from the property line, nothing to do with the block wall.
No, I'm looking at the driveway. See where the driveway is and the walkway to the front of the house?
Yep.
Okay, so are we moving that house 10 feet forward towards the road?
No.
Moving it 10 feet. That's where I'm confused, because you're moving it 10 feet to the 10-foot mark forward.
No.
Then it would be an obstruction.
It's in regards to structures on the property where the setback from the fence is.
Yeah, it might have been the terminology I'm using, too, because we call this the front setback, and then I'm calling this a front side. And some people call it a corner side or second front. So it might be my terminology. And some people call it a corner side or second front, so it might be my terminology.
Now, in our meeting, you and I, we had with Keith and Dave, we were told, especially on Central, that the property owner's property line went all the way down to the sidewalk. Did we get a clarification on that particular area there on Central?
On all the lots on Central?
Yeah.
You know, I would really have to look at each lot, but a majority of the time, the block walls in this particular area or subdivision, the developer is building the walls on the property line. This one here, I do know, like this wall is on the property line.
What's the requirement right now with block walls so far as height? On the corner itself is like three feet, you said. So how deep would that go on the side lot line before it can step up to six feet?
Okay, so with the block wall, I mean, we can go up to the front setback, and in this case, let me go back to my setback table. So in say R one forty zoning district, the front setback is thirty feet.
Correct.
So for the front thirty feet, the block wall could only be three feet, and then after that, it could go up to the six feet.
The front setback is dictating the height of the front.
Yeah, and then there is the secondary rule of the side triangle though. We always have to follow the side triangle in these corners.
Well, they're supposed to, they don't, but they're supposed to.
That is, yeah, that is in our zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you're leaving the front setback the same, you're looking at doing the front side setback at ten feet.
Yes, and only on corner lots.
Only on corner lots.
Yes.
I just want to say, I think it's a good thing. There's a lot, there's so much difficulty with the corner lots, and then when you go and try to set a house and try to figure it all out, it just, the values are a little bit challenged because there's nothing, it's just inappropriate the way it is. And it's set, so I think it's, I think it's a good thing, that changing those setbacks, that's all.
Yeah, I'm not real thrilled of the idea on R one forty, having a house which are typically much larger, ten feet from the side of the street, but that's personal choice.
Do you know what the thought process was to have them staggered like they are? Because the R one forty gets cut down two thirds, and that's significant.
I actually wasn't here during this time period, I actually don't, and I really, what I had to base was comparing what most of the other cities are doing and counties are doing now. Rich was here much longer than I, do you have a good reason why these were staggered?
Assuming this is one of the forty seven year old ordinances.
This is, I won't really know.
I guess the theory in general is that when you have a larger property, you want more space between buildings and things like that to maintain that space. I think that's where it comes from. But it's ironic though that we have more problems with setting things on larger lots than we have on the smaller lots. And part of it is that just the staggered nature of the setbacks, so.
That, and then we did just discuss with some of the developers, and the main thing they would like to continue to see is that the interior side setback to remain the same, so there is that space in between on the larger lots, but the front side, they were very much less concerned about.
It just seems to me that what's driven this has been errors, and I don't, I don't know if that's a good reason to.
It could be perceived as errors, or it could proceed as something that needed to be changed a long time ago. It could go both ways.
So this is only really in regards to buildings of any, any sort, being built onto a property shed, garage, from the property line, we're looking at changing instead of thirty feet, we're looking at change it to ten feet.
Chairman, correct, and accordingly to the zoning districts, they would all go to ten, but right now, they have a staggered like ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, like you're saying.
But it's only in regards to buildings, putting a shed, garage, and anything like that, it has nothing to do with building a house, and it has more to do with an accessory structure on the property.
Well, the way it is written is actually all buildings.
You could put a house ten feet away from the property line on an R one forty. If this changes, then as long as it's within that side setback, you could build any structure. Doesn't necessarily have to just be a shed or a garage, it could be a house.
And the whole idea on R one forty is to have a little bit of space.
Have a little bit of.
So if you build a house ten feet from the side property line, in an R one forty lot, it's rather imposing.
Yeah, I agree.
Would it behoove us, instead of the written in the way it is, to only include sheds and accessory structures and not homes?
You could recommend that.
Okay.
For detached accessory structures.
I just don't, I do not like the R one forty at all, being changed from thirty to ten.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I'm kind of shaky on the R one twenty even.
Yeah. Is there any way to do something different than all ten?
Yes.
Right, right.
Cause I think it should stagger, I mean, I would agree with him, if you have a, you know, a one acre property, you know, and you're going down, you don't want, sometimes, well, we're dealing with corners, so we wouldn't even be dealing with a neighbor necessarily, it's going to be on a street, but still, it can take away the aesthetics of having a big old house that close on a one acre property.
We could recommend that we leave the house at thirty feet, and accessory structures on the R one forties at ten, which was kind of what they're asking, but we're just narrowing the sculpt down.
The R one forties are the one acre or more, right?
Forty thousand square feet, an acre.
Forty thousand square feet.
Chairman, that is correct, that most of these situations have been related to detached accessory structures. Most of the situations we've come across have been related to detached accessory structures, so we could do that.
It's not so much the house, it's the accessory structures where we're having this problem.
Correct.
If we were to put forth a recommendation to leave, to leave the house as stated, but accessory structures, change that, then we could put the recommendation in.
Well, what's stopping a property owner from putting a thirty by sixty foot accessory structure ten feet within that setback? See what I'm saying? And you're still going to have a big building, you know, if that's the concern, you're still going to have a large building within that ten feet.
Or, I would say, because we're still, then we're going back to the R one six, is not going to be concerned about putting an accessory structure. They're going to be wanting to put the house in a better situation, so I think I would have to go, my personal is changing the setbacks to, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, or whatever it is. It should be based on the lot size, because the R one six would not be concerned about putting an accessory structure up, most likely. Right? Isn't it the house situation?
Well, we're already doing that, because if people want to put a shed in, it has to be four feet from the rear and five feet from the side, so we already have a requirement for an accessory structure on the R one six and R one eights.
In a backyard, not in the front yard.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be building anything out in the front yard.
Well, I don't, this isn't being built in the front yard.
Chairman, can I try to clarify one more, one more time with this? Okay, so going back to what we were requesting, the way the current proposal is set is that, yeah, the way it's written right now, all front side setbacks would be, you know, ten feet. And if we wanted to restrict it to detached accessory structures, we could. Today, detached accessory structures can be located, like you said, up to four foot to the rear, but would have to meet the side setback, and right now, if you put a detached shed, say in this R one forty, it'd have to be thirty feet from the front side, so those are the ones that would that had had the most problems with the larger setback than just having the flat ten foot for them.
So the benefit for the city to uniform it, does it make it simple for language for people that are trying to get their permits?
For everyone, really, for staff, for applicants, for the developers that develop in multi jurisdictions. They typically ask, but it is, most of them are ten feet at this point, and so it does help resolve a lot of these issues that have been coming up.
I don't have an issue with anything other than the R one forties. I mean, if you want to flip everything to a ten foot, with the R one forties, that's a big space.
And the twenty also.
And the twenties also. And the twenty, yeah, but, I mean, I don't have an issue with the two fifteens, flipping them to ten. And I don't have an issue uniforming the twenty and the forty, they, you know, to make them both, to make them both twenty, or making them both fifteen. But I think putting them ten feet is just, I think that's just huge.
Well, personally, I think it'd be okay to change six, eight, and ten, and leave twenty and forty alone.
I think if we were to change twenty and forty at all, I would only like five feet difference, and that's insignificant, so easier to leave it alone.
I'd have to agree with McCoy, that they would leave it alone.
For the twenty and the forty.
With this going on right now, being that we're going to be meeting with the new company to revamp our ordinances, I can imagine this would be one of the things that could be addressed, so any decision that we come with tonight, are we jumping the gun?
No, Chairman, you know, we have a current situation right now that we are dealing with, that this isn't, we wouldn't be jumping the gun for this current situation. And reducing it to ten feet would resolve one of the situations we're actually dealing with today. Part of the thing with the R one forty, say on this corner lot, is this, the street is about seventy feet? Seventy feet wide, so I didn't give you the full view of the street. So when the building was, if it was close to the ten foot of the wall, there's actually quite a bit of distance in between the, I guess, the next home or other, and just in general in that area. So that's part of the reason why this is here tonight.
Doesn't make sense to me to rewrite an ordinance for one individual.
No, sir, this is not for one individual, there's several that this has come up for.
I'm sure.
So if you don't mind, can you expand on the current situation? Tell us what the zoning is and what the problem is.
Sure. The current situation is we have a detached garage being constructed in a R one forty. There was a thirty foot setback shown on the site plan, and the thirty foot setbacks should be from the wall. But it was, actually ended up being shown from the sidewalk, the end of the sidewalk. Yeah, so then, uh, the site plan was approved that way. That was overlooked during the site plan approval. And so the structure is partially built at this point, and upon inspections, it was determined that the structure is about eleven foot from the wall at this point.
Partially built means what exactly?
Partially constructed, framed.
The slabs in place?
Yep.
Is it framed?
It is framed, yeah. And so this is not the only situation this has happened in, this is the one that probably brought this amendment forward after several others have come with different variations, whether there was another R one forty property owner that had his whole plan designed, showing a detached garage close to the front side setback, brought it in, then upon review, it was determined that that was too close to the front side setback, they had to go back to the drawing board. And they had a difficult time because there were septic in place and septic lines, so it did take a lot of redesigning to do. There is probably a couple others I can bring up similar, but this is not the only reason why this is being brought here tonight, but it's definitely pushed us more to do it now versus later.
Well, this is kind of like the same situation where the house was built in that twenty foot setback.
Yeah, I remember that one too.
So this, again, we're trying to correct an error.
Yeah, it seems to me that more clear instruction would solve this problem, instead of changing what we have in place already. I mean, you can't protect people from their own mistakes sometimes. But if a builder isn't smart enough to tell the property owner, hey, if you're going to build a building on this, you have to measure from the lot line, not the sidewalk, not the wall, from the lot line, and then commence construction from that.
But I think the problem is here, the city made a mistake in the.
Well, that's the city's problem, it shouldn't, you shouldn't change everything because the city didn't pay attention, and the landowner didn't pay attention.
I think it needs to be moved. I mean, because the way that it's written now is within that setback. And, you know, and it just creates snowball effects, you know, it's like, so then the next person down the road thinks that they're entitled to do that, and that's where we keep coming across all those problems and errors.
This is an ask forgiveness after the fact.
Yeah, and just like we did, that's what we did when the house was built, five feet in the twenty foot setback, and then we had a property owner come in and say, well, when I go to build my house, I want that same privilege.
Exactly.
I would say, move it. Move it. Make a smaller building there, move it.
What are other options for this particular homeowner?
Moving it.
Moving it, that's the only option, he's got to move it.
Chairman and commissioners, you're able to recommend anything you'd like, basically at this point, that was my recommendation on this text amendment.
Well, I'm very familiar with the property.
Can you tell me?
So I know the visual from the sidewalk and so forth, and in this particular case, in my opinion, I don't, I don't see the issue there. I mean, if it was maybe somewhere else, it'd be more of a problem, but we're talking a corner here, and it's, I think like we talked earlier, what between the sidewalk and the fence is twenty, fifteen some feet to twenty feet?
On this particular situation, there is eleven feet, and then, then there's the distance between the wall, I guess that was another nineteen from the wall to the sidewalk.
Can you tell me if this is an owner builder or is it a contractor that made the mistake?
The review of the site plan would have been staff, the owner builder, I believe it's this, in this case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I still agree with keeping R one twenty, R one forty the same, but the rest of it, I'd agree with, that's my opinion.
Any further questions of Sylvia? All right, thank you Sylvia, I'll open this up to the public. Please come up and state your name and.
My name is Robert Davis. I'm the owner of the building in question right now, and what we're trying to do is get twenty feet of our land back. It's at thirty feet right now from the wall, you can't build nothing within thirty feet of the inside of that wall. We want to move it to ten, so we can use the rest of our lot. I mean, it's not going to impede any traffic or nothing. I mean, you guys are taking thirty feet of the inside of our lot away from us.
I live on a corner lot and have the same situation, I totally understand where you come from, you know, in that sense. And it seems like you have a, like with ours, it seems like you have a thirty foot wasted oasis out there that you've got to maintain a landscape, but yet there's, you can't use it for anything.
Right, you can't use it for anything.
And I get that.
It would make it a lot simpler to make them all ten feet. The inspectors won't have a question about it, nobody would have any questions, it would all be ten feet.
I'm very familiar with.
We're not talking about the outside of the wall, we're talking about the inside on our property. You're taking thirty feet away from us, so everything has to be built right in the middle of the lot.
I have to say something real quick, I have a vision problem, I can't see very well, and I did not realize that this, I have to excuse myself, because I do have a. And I did not realize that this, I have to excuse myself, because I do have a client relationship with the applicant.
Just trying to make it simpler for everybody.
I...
All right, sir, thank you. Any further comments from the... Please state your name.
My name is Wes Maroni, and I have the same problem. I am on a corner, and I have the city five foot in my block wall, and then I have twenty foot to the house. And I can't use it. It's all dead. All I did was put red rock and let my grandchildren run around in there hiding, and that's it. Can't use it. I would have loved to have moved the house over five or ten more foot. And the north side, have the land used over there, so I could have made my side yard. If my side yard is to the neighbors ten foot. But because I live on a corner, I have to do with actually twenty-five feet, you know, to the cement line. And it made no sense to me to lose all that valuable space. I paid good money for that half acre, and to have it sitting there doing absolutely nothing is not right. Now, should it be ten foot? I don't know, fifteen foot at least, you know, ten or fifteen, but not twenty. You're giving up a lot. And if you're on a one acre, thirty feet, then you can't do anything. You're not going to make it a picnic area, and you're not going to do anything. Like the man said, it's thirty feet of dead space, but I have to pay taxes on it that I don't get to use. Is that right? That's my question to you.
Thank you.
Sylvia, I have a question for you.
Any further comments from the public? Please come up and state your name.
Sorry.
Ken Watkins. The problem is, we buy these properties, a lot of people buy corner lots because they want the extra space. And so we all buy our properties going in knowing what the law is. The problem is, we're trying to, or at least we should have done our homework and known what the law was. And now, you know, there are complaints saying, well, we should be able to use our property. The problem is, we knew that going in, or we should have gone in. It's shame on us for not knowing what the ordinance was, for one. Secondly, if you change the R-140 down, someone conceivably could, as Councilmember Shore has mentioned, put a ten-foot RV garage standing fifteen feet up. It's ten feet off the line, it's ten feet off the house, but it's using that ten feet.
Using their 20.
Right. So, and, yeah. So, you know, but an RV is only eight and a half feet wide. So someone, if they wanted to, could put a long, slender garage there, you know, an accessory building. That could be unsightly. I would think that would be unsightly, especially on a big, beautiful lot. I think as Councilmember McCoy said, that's why we oftentimes buy these bigger lots, because we want the spacing. And so now we're trying to change that. And then thirdly, staff made a mistake. So now, who's trying to change that mistake? You know, let's remember what's in place already. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sylvia.
Any further, any further comments from the public? All right, I see none closed. Sylvia?
Sylvia, I have a question, yes. I'm sorry.
We have to finish.
I know. I'm sorry. Sylvia, is the reason that they did this originally possibly for fire hazards and for concerns of fire? You're putting, I'm just visualizing, you know, a half-acre lot in the space between houses. And if you start putting buildings up between those, and you're putting that space between houses closer and closer together, the original decision to do this twenty, thirty, fifteen, fifteen, ten, is it to maintain a concern for fire hazard or fire safety?
So Commissioner, the interior side setback would not change?
Would not change.
Would not change. It's the front-side setback. And I did run this past by the Building Department prior to doing this text amendment. And they did not have any objection to this. So I hope that answers your question.
It did. It did. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I have to agree with Mr. Watson in that if you do your due diligence and you understand the building concept, you know what the rules are, and you should comply with them. So it's kind of like, it's a self-imposed problem.
I'll agree with that. I mean, when you're buying a piece of property, you know what your setbacks are. You know where your boundaries are of where you can build and where you cannot build. And, you know, you went through a title company, a realtor, and everything, and it's all documented. So you knew going in as to what the property's limitations were, you know? And then now we come up with this to change something that's been in play for an error. And I just, I don't feel comfortable with that. We did it once already, and then we had other property owners saying, well, I want that same privilege when I go to build. So I think we're opening up, you know, a whole new issue with this. So it's kind of my take.
Well, my thought is, after reading all the history and everything, and I think that with Havasu and Bullhead all having ten feet, I think all we're doing is just aligning ourselves with the other cities. And I am afraid that this is going to be addressed in our ordinance update that's going to be taking place. And I'm just imagining this is probably a forty-seven-year-old ordinance that's never been touched and has never come forward. But that's...
But it's worked pretty well for most of those years, when people read the rules.
It's, it depends.
Well, I don't think we should base our decision due to one property owner's error. So I think if you want to move into that direction, then I think we should table it and see what the committee is going to come up with and how it would be addressed at that time.
Also, I think bringing back some more research and some communities our size. Not necessarily consider Havasu as spread out as what we are. They're a little bit more condensed. I just don't think I have enough facts to review and make a decision at this point.
I'm kind of of the opinion that if I wanted to be governed by what Havasu and Bullhead does, I'd move there.
I don't think we need to be in alignment with other communities or with the county. I don't think that's important. And I'm not going to support the R-120 or the R-140 changes.
And I agree with that.
I do too. And I don't think we should be changing something due to fix an error. I think the error needs to be fixed and not changing the zoning.
And I also think we should move on it tonight and not table it.
I'll make a motion if you're ready to not amend this ordinance, leave it in place as it's written.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? See none? Roll call vote?
Before I give my answer on this one, I look at this as a two-step error. And I think Sylvia said that this is a city error. And it's a homeowner error. It's a combination thereof. And unfortunately, you know, we have a homeowner in the room that's paying the ultimate price for it. But I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner McCoy on this one.
I'm going to oppose the motion.
I agree. McCoy?
All right, thank you. Item D, consideration as we're scheduling a September tenth, 2019 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The September Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is scheduled on the day before the 2019 APA Arizona State Planning Conference begins on September eleventh, 2019. Due to the length of the trip, for those going there in interest in driving to the conference on September tenth. So we're asking, is there a problem with anybody in holding the meeting on Monday, September tenth, instead of Tuesday, September eleventh?
I think the tenth is a Tuesday.
To the ninth.
To the ninth.
Yeah, schedule it to the ninth.
It's fine for me. I don't have an issue with that.
The September, I think the date is wrong.
September ninth.
September tenth is a Tuesday, so you're wanting to, to the ninth. Okay. So is that a problem with anybody? Monday, the ninth is okay? All right.
I'll make a motion to move the regular scheduled planning and zoning meeting to Monday, September the ninth, at 5:30.
I second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, announcement by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars. Requests for agenda items for future meetings and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. I have one thing I've learned. I requested a meeting on code enforcement, and Sylvia and myself, Keith Eaton and Dave, I'm not getting his last name from the Kingman Police Department. And it's, and I've been just as guilty probably as most of us. And because we have been stated that code enforcement is only complaint-driven. And I learned at this meeting that is not the case. They do have their law enforcement officers try to write, the way I believe he stated it, two non-vehicular tickets a day on their shift. So I just thought I would put out there that I'd learned something, that we are not a complaint-driven city, as I was told.
Some of the ordinances are written, though, to be complaint-driven.
Well, that may be, but he has his officers to do, other than vehicular and their other duties, write on whatever they see in the code enforcement.
We're getting close to discussing a topic that's not on the agenda.
Well, just... Any further comments?
Would you like to place it on an agenda, an upcoming agenda?
I just, no, I just wanted to make a statement of facts. And I need a motion for an adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.